Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 20, 2015, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. I, for Rotary this morning, I had to do the happy bucks, and I, I thought, well, what's significant about this day in history is some sort of a method for looking at an idea for happy bucks. But in 1803, I thought you'd all want to know that the United States Senate ratified the Louisiana Purchase, which was a pretty big deal. And in 1820, Spain bought part of Florida, Spain sold part of Florida to us for $5 million. So now the price of a single house down in Fort Lauderdale.
Wow.
And in 1964, close to home, Mad Dog Vashon beat Vern Gagne for the world championship. So there you go. That's what went on in history on October 20th. All right, we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the meeting agenda, as shown. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And we next have the consent agenda. There's 16 items on the consent agenda. I think there are a couple of members that wish to remove a few items for more in-depth discussion. Member Brindle, E.
Four E, please.
And Member Stewart and Member Swenson, four L. Okay, with the exception of four E and four L, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of four E and four L. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And then on to Member Brindle, four E, which is a proposed resolution amending the 2015 budget. Question for Director Rogan. Member Brindle?
Yes, and I have already addressed the question, and we have a report and recommendation for an amendment to the budget that reflects transfers from our liquor fund. We have municipal liquor stores here in Edina, and we're adjusting the amounts that, of the funds from the liquor store fund to other accounts in the, in the city's budget. And the report and recommendation lists the five transfers from the, from the liquor fund, three of which are being amended. And so when I look at the resolution and see that only three of them are listed in the resolution, I thought, since the recommendation lists five transactions, that the resolution should also reflect five transactions. So I would, if you would look at the resolution, please, after now therefore be it resolved, the next paragraph, I would like to add the following sentence to that paragraph.
After 285,000 appears?
That's right. After 285,000, I would like to add this paragraph, and I have it printed here. Transfers from the liquor fund to the arena fund and the construction fund for $200,000 each will be made in 2015 as planned for in Resolution 2014-162. So that would make the resolution match the recommendation.
All right. Any further questions on that one? Going to move the modified resolution?
So I would like to move the modified Resolution Number 2015-108.
All right, we have an amended Resolution 2015-108, as stated by Member Brindle. We got the motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then both Members Swenson and Member Stewart had some questions about item four L, which is the letter of intent, potential letter of intent regarding community solar gardens. And I don't know, one prefers to go first. Member Stewart?
You start.
I'm happy to. I wanted to remove this, in part because I voted against it when we saw it in its original form, and I do like to keep my votes consistent when possible. My reasons for objecting the first time were a couple. One, I wasn't sure that the city needed to get into the solar garden business, as residents are able to subscribe to solar gardens without the city involvement, because they are available through other channels. And then my real concern was that I didn't want to see time from city staff being used for something that I didn't perceive was urgently necessary for the city. That particular concern has been mitigated to some degree, in the sense that I have learned in the four weeks since we considered the resolution, that we have been able to get a contract done and make this operate quite independently of city staff time. Manager Neil, perhaps you want to address how we've done that?
Certainly. Councilmember Stewart and members of council. I think one of the things that we, two issues that we discussed last time were just the administrative burden of putting together, monitoring the RFP itself, we felt was significant. And that was something we didn't feel we had the expertise in, we were concerned about how it was going to work. We were fortunate to be able to get connected through Councilmember Staunton and others with a local attorney with expertise in the energy field, and that has been, we've been very grateful for his assistance, and it's been integral into helping us be able to answer these questions and do it in a cost-effective way. The other issue, though, is that I think we were imagining, we were taking the level of administrative burden and maintenance burden, et cetera, for the very small array that we have on top of City Hall, and we were multiplying that out with the size of what we're looking at for the public works building. And that's not a fair comparison, given, given that we own what's on top of this building and we maintain it. That's not the same kind of relationship. We are essentially renting space on the top of our public works building to a third party who's going to own and maintain all the, the solar array that's on there. So it's very different, and it has a much lower maintenance burden and ownership burden for the city.
Good. So I'm, I'm as green as the next guy, but I voted against that. I still have a hard time generating a lot of enthusiasm for the city doing it, but it's certainly not as objectionable to me today as it was four weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Member Swenson, and then Member Staunton.
Well, I had a couple of questions. So I didn't see anything in the lease. What happens if it doesn't sell out? Does it get built?
If it, Councilmember Swenson, members of council, if it, the first thing to remember is that what we're talking about tonight is agreeing to a letter of interest, which is not quite the level of the actual lease agreement.
Okay.
What's anticipated, however, is when we start negotiating the lease, that the city would probably step in and be the buyer of last resort. So if it doesn't sell out, we would agree to buy the, the power that remains, probably for that building in that, in that sense. But we would step in to do that. I think what we have begun to learn from the vendors who are interested in this project, and also from Excel Energy folks that we've talked to, is they do not anticipate that's going to be an issue whatsoever.
I didn't, it said that Edina residents would get priority. I didn't really see that pathway necessarily, so would that maybe come in the next step?
It would.
It also talked about 25 years of life, and I didn't see where owners could sell out in the process. And the only thing I'm always concerned about, I think similar to Member Stewart, is this will be viewed, even though it may not be our solar array, as a city. It's on a city building, you know, we're, so at some point, if there's some resident who, who has ownership and is not happy, the first person they're going to come to is us. Why did you do this? Why did you allow it to be done this way? So that's kind of the basis of my questions. It says that they'll fix anything that goes wrong with our building, and they'll have insurance. What happens if the company that runs this goes belly up, and there is no financial wherewithal to keep the insurance or to fix something that's broken, or how does that get handled in this lease agreement?
I'm presuming we, that is an issue that is handled in the lease agreement itself, not the letter of interest that we're talking about at tonight's meeting.
Okay, well, then, those are all things that I'm really interested to see how, as a city, we still have some sort of protection, and this doesn't become some sort of odd albatross.
Right. So what we're, what we're essentially doing tonight is, is not unimportant, because what it allows us to do is, is to get in the queue at, at Excel Energy to get a community solar garden. And Councilmember Staunton knows this probably better than, better than me, but this is the direction that, that Excel told us that they wanted to go in. They don't really have any, or many, of this exact variety of project in front of them right now. So if we can get in the queue and, and get awarded one of the projects, we've got some, then we've got some real words nothing to do on the, on the agreement to make sure it satisfies all your levels of concern and, you know, from an ownership standpoint.
Well, at this point, I think I can support going to the next step, because I have a little bit more comfort, but I still, as you hear in my voice, have some concerns.
Member Staunton?
Obviously, I've been supportive of this since the beginning, and I'll just maybe elaborate on a couple of the points. Manager Neil just described the, the kind of playing field of, of folks who are in the community solar garden game. And I'd say that to take the garden metaphor a little bit further, that, that most of what you read about in the newspaper these days are solar farms, not gardens. And what I think we would be positioned to do is start to really provide a garden that is the kind of thing that was intended. And what I'm hoping is that we can, by coming up with a lease agreement, we can kind of open source that lease agreement, so that others in the community, whether it be the school district that has a lot of buildings that might be good, or commercial property owners in the community, or places of worship, that all could provide solar power to residents of the community, who, for one reason or another, will have a difficult time putting it on their own house if they want to. There's cost issues, there's aesthetic issues, there's, there's issues with it becoming obsolete. Some, some houses like mine have too much shade to, to put a solar garden on there. So I think we, I think this is a situation where we can prime the pump on a market that, that could really help get the solar market going, and it's a pretty low risk for us. I think the, the concerns that Councilmember Swenson raises are, are real and legitimate, and as we're talking about the lease agreement, we ought to be anticipating those and doing everything we can to minimize our, our participation. But one thing that I would highlight that Manager Neil didn't say is that the lease would, like most leases, come with some revenue to the city. So not only are we making available a space that isn't otherwise utilized, we're going to get a little bit of money for it. So that will certainly, in the first year, cover the costs of what it's taken to put this thing together, and in future years, you know, it never hurts to have a little extra revenue coming in. So I'm in favor of it, and I encourage everybody to keep this going forward, and think it has great potential for us.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I am in support of this. One of the points of discussion that we had with a developer who spoke with us about his sketch plan at, for apartments at 66th and Xerxes, was the possibility of doing something like this on the roof of that building. It is a revenue generator for whatever building it goes on. Where this is on a city building and therefore is a revenue generator for the city, it's a revenue generator for the owner of any building that wants to make the rooftop available for a solar garden. So it's a win-win, if, as has been pointed out, if the lease is written correctly. And, and I think this being the first one will help us to pave the way. So I'm in support of it.
Good. Like Member Swenson, I'm very curious about going to the next step and seeing who's interested, how they're interested, why they're interested, and I think it's, it's something really worth exploring for our community, to see again if we can lead the way in some areas that are very important, and that is clean energy. So I'm in favor of passing it as well. Member Brindle?
And when we pay our Excel Energy bill, we are paying for wind power. We check the box that we want to be using wind power. It comes at a premium, so we actually pay more than we would if we were paying for the typical power that comes into the house. But, but it's important to us to further the clean energy. So this is another opportunity for people who are passionate about solar to do exactly that.
All right. Would somebody care to move the matter for L?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of intent to negotiate lease for a community solar garden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Abstention?
Who's abstaining?
I voted aye.
Did you vote aye? Aye, all right, okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Now, next, we're going to move into the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and Jeff Brown, our community health administrator, has, has Bonnie Paulson with him from Bloomington Public Health, that provides us with our public health services on a contract basis, and she's here to make a presentation to us this evening. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Yep. So, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, the city's health division does enforcement activity related to environmental health in the city, like inspecting restaurants and swimming pools and doing public health nuisance enforcement. But because we are a community health board as a city, we're required to do additional public health activities. And to fulfill those requirements from state statute, we do contract with Bloomington Public Health to, to meet those requirements. So Bonnie is here tonight, as the mayor said, to basically review our past year's activities within the city that Bloomington Public Health provides for us. So I'll hand it off to Bonnie.
Yes, show me.
Yeah, Bonnie, welcome.
Good morning, or good morning, good evening, Mayor, and member.
I'm obviously Bonnie Paulson, public health administrator for the city of Bloomington. And we do work closely with Edina and Richfield as a public health alliance, and so today I just wanted to just give you a little bit of update. I feel like this is going.
Yeah, sure, it is going in and out. It's not your imagination.
Okay. So basically, when we look at the population of what we serve. You can see.
This is our brand-new system, Bonnie. You're getting, you're getting a chance of, just our second meeting with this new system, and you're really pointing out its flaws early on.
So these are, this is the total population that we serve when we work together. We have 172,000, and this is 2014 population estimates, and this, we are about 15% of the Hennepin County population, so we're serving a pretty, pretty good chunk of Hennepin County. Just as a reminder, that you are a community health board, so basically, you have these six assurances, and Jeff was talking about that. He does provide the environmental health piece of it along with the public health nuisances, but that you guys do contract with public health in Bloomington to provide some of these other areas of assurances. And so just wanting to let you know that we do make sure that you guys get covered when we do the work that we do, and then that our annual report is basically kind of a report back to you of all the things that we do work with. So this is the annual report, and it did get into your agenda, into your packet. So basically, it just shows the work that we've done, and it has multiple pages in there, looking at community health, the WIC services, the clinic services, and, but data doesn't always show, we, we've always really just shown the numbers that we do of like how many WIC clients we see, how many elderly people we see. But this year, I really wanted to put in some stories, because I think the numbers show you that we're busy doing things, but it doesn't always tell you the connection that we have with the communities that we work with and the residents that we see. In the annual report, it does talk about the 10 top health issues. In 2013, we did a community health assessment, and public health is supposed to do one every five years, so we'll have to do another one in 2018. And we do that in partnership with the city of Minneapolis and Hennepin, so Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield work with those other partners. And then from that health assessment, we each, each city identified their top 10 health issues, so we do try to keep an eye on that as we're looking at what we want to do and work with the communities. And then again, this just lists our service areas. We do have clinical services, we do disease prevention and control. So if there is somebody that reports a disease, and whether it's in Edina, Bloomington, or Richfield, our staff do respond, and we do routinely come over and meet with your residents if there's an issue, whether it's pertussis or whooping cough, mumps, we've been over here. And we try to make sure that Jeff knows every time that we have something, in case there's some questions that he might have. We also work emergency preparedness, again, writing plans and making sure that Jeff's up to date with that, and then knowing that we would respond if you guys had some issues. Family Health Services, we do see families over here with moms and babies. We do health promotion, and we do also come over and work with your police and see vulnerable adults. We recently have started working with Deb Peon and the Act on Alzheimer's. There, she's in the process of writing a new grant, so we're trying to partner with her on that, because both in your community and our community, we have a growing aging population. This next slide just is one of the slides, or one of the pages in your, in your annual report. One of the things I just wanted to touch base, or to let you know, that the CHIP grant, and I know you guys had the Open Streets, but CHIP was part of that, and we were partnering with the businesses on France, I'm trying to remember what they all were, the France Business Association and Alina Health, and it sounded like that that was a great activity and was a really good outcome with that. And the other thing we've been working on in is smoke-free multi-unit housing, and since October of 2014, in Edina, we've had seven additional properties, go smoke-free. And so that's another thing that we just kind of keep trying to move that, at that level for you guys. This just talks a little bit about some of the outreach that we do, and we do do the Nurses In and a couple of multi-unit housings here, just trying to touch base with families and provide services, and working with the diverse community. And then also, we work at the family, Edina Family Center. So again, trying to make contacts with the community and providing resources and seeing how we can help out. The other thing that we are working on, I think we've talked about it before, is accreditation. We were given permission by the Public Health Advisory Board to, Accreditation Board, to be able, be able to accredit as a, as a public health alliance. So basically, Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington will get national accreditation. Our, we have to, our application is in, we have to upload all of our stuff and finish up that by November. We have collected probably over 500 pieces of documentation, so it's been a little bit of work that we've been putting into this. And so we're hopefully, well, we will be done, there won't be a hopefully, we will be done by November with getting our documentation in, but that is just part of the process. We also will have a site visit, and Jeff will be a part of that also, just trying to, knowing that we will be accrediting as the three cities and, and having that as three partnerships to do that. So that's a huge undertaking, but I think it's a great asset for Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington, as we will all be nationally credited. I think at one of the last meetings, when your health commission reported, there was a question on vaccination rates, so I put these in there. For the kindergarten vaccination rates, basically, everything is, everybody is up to date on all their immunizations. The only one that is down just a little bit is the hepatitis B. And the Edina one, the vaccination is 95.5, sorry, I better read the right one, 94.6, helps to have glasses on, not on the top of your head, 94.6, and we're just under the state rate there of 95.5. But when we look at the seventh grade vaccination rates, basically, all kids are caught up and up to date above the, the, what's expected at the 95%. So no concerns or questions about the vaccinations at, at that point, for those two age points. I guess that's all I have. Again, there's more information in the annual report, so hopefully you'll look at that and read some of the stories. And then I guess, I don't know if you have any questions for me other than that.
Sure. Any questions for Ms. Paulson? Member Swenson?
Just a comment. You have a changed format in your report this year, a little bit with your stories the way you, and I, and I enjoyed reading it, and, but you had a lot of good information for me to take out of. And one of the things I noticed, that we seem to have a good, a good, senior nursing visits, home visits, we had a fairly high incidence of that, and a population of maybe 94 that needed those visits. So I thought that's what I took away as being one area that you seem to really be helping us with our aging population.
I, I think one of the, and again, I, I started back in May of 2014, but one of the things that I think that Bloomington has built across, Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, is this connection with environmental health and also with police. And so when they go out and do some of those concerned calls, and if environmental health sees something with some hoarding and garbage house issues, they usually call us and we, and do a referral. And so either we go out with police and the environmental health person and try to make a connection with that person. Usually with those homes, the elderly sometimes just need some help and resources, and we have a better way of connecting with that than sometimes environmental health or police do. We usually make more than one visit with them, depending on what's happening with the, the person. But it's about trying to, and, you know, there's lots of issues with people as they age, sometimes they just need some help, sometimes there's mental health issues involved, and so it's really a good connection with that public health nurse to, to have that connection, so.
It was nice to see his part of your report. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Paulson?
Just a, just a comment. Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. I do like the format of the report. The stories are nice to, nice to have with a face, and it just makes it personal. And it's good for our community to know that there is a public health agency that is part of our community and serves our community. We need to make sure that people know that, especially those who are here and trying to make their way in a new country. It's important for them to know that this is there, they walk in the door and the services are available to them. And so, so as, as much as we can make that known, as people are assimilating into a new community, we should, we should definitely do that. But, but it's, it's nice also to see not only the different ethnicities, but also the age brackets, including seniors. And I think this, I don't know, I can't remember, and I didn't, I didn't think of it until this very moment, whether we actually called out services to seniors in previous annual reports, but I'm glad you did now, because we are so focused on Act on Alzheimer's, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Couple of questions for you, Bonnie. When you look at those vaccination rates, you know, I think everybody wants those rates to be perfect. And I'm wondering what some of the reasons are, for example, in the, in the polio vaccination category, we're at 98.17%. What are some of the reasons that you're, you're finding that people aren't, aren't vaccinating their children, or, you know, what, so give me an array of examples of why we're not perfect in these areas? Why isn't every kid getting vaccinated for everything that could be a problem, not only for them, but for others around them?
My understanding that is about 2% of, of people are just choosing not to. They're, they're saying that they don't want their children immunized, to their, those, that group that feels that immunizations are harmful, and so they're not going to. So we're probably never going to get 100%. And then also, I think there are those families that are high-risk, that fall through the cracks, and that persons in poverty, a lot of times, are mobile, and then they kind of move around, and so sometimes we may, they may get the immunizations, but they may not be documented about it. And so then it's sometimes hard to And so then it's sometimes hard to kind of actually get that 100%. So really, I think when they're looking at, how can, what are we doing to protect the population, we may not need to be 100%, but we need to be above a percent that is that herd immunity. And so basically, when they say 95% or better would give us herd immunity, that's kind of what they're looking at. So we have 2% of parents who just are going to choose not to. We have probably 1% to 2% of kids who can't get immunized because of, they may have cancer, or they may have some other immune disorder that they can't get the immunizations.
That you can understand.
So basically, you've got a couple, 3, 4% right there, that just aren't going to probably get those immunizations, and so, pretty, a pretty close rate to 100%, even though it's not 100%.
For those folks that don't want to see their kids vaccinated, because they've got a preconceived notion of the, of the risks involved, is there a legal standard in Minnesota that they have to meet to avoid having their kids vaccinated?
All they have to do is just say that they're a conscientious objector, for whatever reason, and they can choose not to and opt out.
Okay. All right. On one of your slides, promoting health in the community, it was on page 24, I was looking at some of the numbers in terms of events that you have different places, and of course, we know that Bloomington is, is, is the biggest city of the three by far, twice the size of Edina. And it, but the numbers caused me to think about, for example, senior health promotion, you had 265 events in Bloomington, and 81 in Edina. And I was wondering, how did, how did, you know, if we think we're half the size of Bloomington, it, it might follow, and at least one argument would be that we should have had half the number that Bloomington had for senior health promotion, since we hired you to do this kind of work. So what, how do you decide that Bloomington's going to get the predominant portion of your attention, and, and, and we're going to get some, but not as much?
I, I don't think we look at it quite that way, but what we do is we try to do outreach. And so sometimes, if we, if we're trying to do outreach and we're not getting a connection, it makes us a little bit harder to try to do those services. I, I, you know, so we go out to the senior sites, and so if not as many people come down or choose to utilize our services, the numbers might be down. So it's, might be that we have a presence, but they're just not choosing to, to, to come down and utilize us. And then I, I do know there was one site in Edina that the numbers have been down significantly. And I don't know if, is it that the elderly are seeing their doctors, not feeling they need to come down, they don't have questions for the nurse? So basically, I think it's not that we're not trying, it's just I think sometimes maybe the, they might be accessing services in another way, and might not need our services at that point, or in that, that particular site. But we are trying to look around for some other sites, to try to make sure that we are accessing seniors and whoever else. Like I said, we've been trying to go to, to some of the low-income housing, to just try to make a connection there.
Well, maybe we can help you in that regard, too, if we know where you're making efforts. We might find other places, or know of other places where you could also set up shop and have-
If you let me know, we can try to make an outreach to-
Have an outreach, yeah.
Some other sites.
Okay. So if you give us your list, or give them to Mr. Brown, on, on the places you've had senior health promotion in Edina, it might be helpful for us to take a look at that. We might have some other ideas for you that would be helpful to you, and to our, and to our residents.
Or if there's some other partners that you think we might not be connected to, letting Jeff know, and he can make sure that we can try to, the more that we're at tables with other people, the better connection we will have, and, and try to, you know, work on our services for you.
Sure. Okay, good. Well, thanks for coming over this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to get an update on Pentagon Park, now known as The Link. We've got Scott Tankenoff with us from Hillcrest Development, who's going to make a presentation for us this evening, and, and provide us with his thoughts on what's next at Pentagon Mr. Tankenoff, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you all again. Just a very brief update. Oh, good, I'm working the new system, so far, so good. Just a brief update on what's been going on at formerly known as Pentagon Park, The Link. As you may be aware, we made a commitment to come back at least a couple of times a year to the council and to the community, and just give a brief overview on what's been going on, and also answer any questions that anyone may have. So, we've been in the process of marketing the, the project, and we've been working on the south parcel predominantly, which is the 12-acre parcel that borders on Highway 10494. That site has also been fully cleared, as the Cradle Club moved to the north, across the street, north of 77th, to the 4530 building recently. And so these are some new drone shots that show the site being further cleared, and then a couple of shots on the ground, of what's left of the building. So from the standpoint of marketing, we've been marketing the project, and we continue to interact with a variety of different users that are looking for office, they're looking for medical, retail, and also the potential of housing, which is something that we talked about with the councils, well as with the Planning Commission, the desire to try to put some housing into the project, and, again, to have a successful mixed-use project. And I'm very confident that we're going to be successful in having a good mixed-use project. Some things take more time than what we think and what we like. We've been talking with a variety of different users, and some users are more complex, and it's a little slower to work with them than others. Some are more bureaucratic, and some are a little bit quicker, and a little more nimble. So, as we continue to move along, we're looking at a whole variety of different uses. And again, we want to find the right fit, the right density, the right mix of things. It is a multiple-use, multiple-generation project. So I think that the, the final thing I wanted to mention is that we continue to meet with staff on an ongoing basis. We meet twice a month, and I would envision that that's going to increase as we work candidly closer toward development activities starting to wind and starting to go. So we meet with Bill and with Kerry, again, twice a month, and candidly, I think that that's going to increase as things move along here. So, lots of different efforts going on besides on the south parcel. We also have some activities taking place on the north, and there has also been a bit of other prep work that took place, as we have abated the final parts of the buildings that are vacant to the north. The 4660 building was the last building to get abated, that's where M L T Delta used to be located. That building is now 99.9% abated, fully of asbestos and lead-based paint. So what that means is that, again, that can roll into development very quickly. So, that is our update for tonight. Can I answer any questions?
Members Swenson?
No, but at noon on Friday, the groundbreaking is at Fred Richards Park for the Through Rivers Park Regional Trail that will come pass there, so that's kind of exciting.
Member Swenson, that is actually really exciting, and I, I think the regional trail is one of the largest, most significant pieces of infrastructure that is going to be, going not only into Edina, but past our property, along our border with Fred Richards. And that is a very meaningful piece of infrastructure. That provides us our transit hub, candidly, from the standpoint, we believe the bicycle is the greatest piece of transit, alternative transit that we have for this project. The certainty, the reality of planning for Fred Richards going into the next phase, as the council moves, or elects hopefully to move that forward, is also very meaningful. That is a question that we get from time to time from users, is what is this really going to look like? What's really going to be in from an amenity standpoint? Do you know where infrastructure will go? The certainty of that is very helpful, as you consider moving that ahead. That will make a very meaningful difference in the reality of people committing to be there. Many CEOs and HR folks and owners of companies struggle with the idea of something is planned, but how is it specifically planned, or when's the reality of it happening? So, the reality of actually the trail breaking ground is a huge benefit, and will be very helpful.
Thank you.
Other questions? Inquiries? I've got one that was segue off of Member Swenson. It strikes me that we would be better off moving sooner rather than later on Fred Richards. We were going to do some study work in '17, but I'm wondering if based on the representation you just made, or the comment you just made, in response to Member Swenson's question, if you think it would be advantageous to the city to spur development quicker if we move some study money into 2016 to work on the future of Fred Richards, and create more certainty for potential tenants or occupants for you on that, on your site adjacent to the park?
Mr. Mayor, I think that it's, it's not only about the certainty for what's happening at The Link, I think it's also about approximately a year plus of that facility having been closed. I think our neighbors, residential neighbors to the north, have been thinking about when planning's going to take place. I think for everybody's sake, it's a very good thing. But I think for the, specifically for the users and the people that will be working, having businesses, potentially living at The Link, it, it really provides a certainty, and the sooner, provides more context and more definition of what it is, they can make their plans a lot easier. It, it is extremely meaningful, it will spur development, it will make a difference, I think for all concerned. It, it would be extremely beneficial.
All right, good. Thank you. Member Brendel?
Well, I'm not a patient person. I've said that dozens of times up here. And I've, memory serves me correctly, it was March of 2014, when we approved a P U D for this property. So we are 18 months later, and we've got some dirt. So I'm going to say that I would like to see some progress happening. I do know of a project that you and I discussed the last time we were together, and, and they're very concerned about their ability to be there. And while they would like very much to have a campus environment there, it's my understanding that it may not be their highest priority, because the cost is simply too high. So, I would, I would like to really encourage you to have, have the knee-to-knee, eye-to-eye conversation with that organization and work something out. Not, I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I mean, clearly, you both have to want it to work. But, but I, I would hate to see something that is so perfect, or seemingly perfect, vaporized before us, because you couldn't come to terms. So, I also do know that, that some of the offices that would move there, the leases are expiring in 2016, so you're, you're obviously aware of that. So, it, it, time is of the essence on it. It, it really is. And I'm not willing to wait to 20 years to see this thing get developed. I'd, I'd really like to see something happen, and time is ticking, and if, if, you know, progress at Fred Richards helps that along, that's fine, but The Link needs to be The Link. And it is going to be the catalyst of the area. It'll be the reason people want to be there. The park will further underscore that. And, and so I, I think you have, you have the piece of property we are all watching, and, and wanting it to be successful. So, when, when I left the meeting the other day, I went, "Ahh!" So, I, I want to hear some, I want to hear some good news, that it's going to happen, and I do not want a B hotel. An A loft is a B loft. I, it's, it's a B hotel. I don't want a B hotel, I want a really nice hotel. If a hotel goes there, it's going to have to compete with, and it will compete with Doubletree. It is a lovely conference center hotel. The Westin is beautiful. So this needs to be on a par with what's here. And, and so I, I, you know, I, I'm not talking out of both sides of my mouth. I want something really nice, that, that really underscores, and again, catalyzes the area. So thank you for being part of our community, thank you for investing in our community, so just please, make it happen.
Thanks for coming in, Mr. Tankenoff.
Councilmember Brendel, thank you. Again, I think the, the focus is always going to be on moving quickly, as developers, as landowners, the, the pressure, the responsibility is on us, that, and that's where it should be, from the funny, the concept of holding the property. We don't, I don't want to hold the property, we don't want to hold the property, we want to get it developed. We also have to think about and balance, what's the right fit, what's the right size? As an example, we're not going to start a 40,000 or 50,000 square foot, one to three-story building on the south parcel, because we would candidly be shortchanging the property, it wouldn't be what we promised the community, it's inconsistent. So, there are times where things shift, and sometimes organizations have changes in their priorities and their plans. We are communicating clearly and directly, we've had conversations with that particular user, will continue to. The good news about this property, it's not a one, the term of art would be a one-trick pony. This is a very unique site, that's very well-located, that we will find the right users for, and the right uses for, and the good news is, it's not any one use. But you're right, there are some uses that are better than others, that will produce not only the right tax base and have the right buildings, but also produce the right jobs. It's about finding the right fit, and I am very motivated to get there. And you've been clear, it hasn't just been at March of 14, it was in, I believe, May of 14, and also at the demolition, I mean, we want to giddy up and go. So actually, I, it's not only a challenge, it's encouragement, I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. We know that, that you'll do the best you can, and you are doing the best you can, because you want, we want it to be right, we want it to match the vision. You're kind of the caretaker of the vision now, and you're taking that responsibility on, not only for your own company, but for our community, because of what we commonly saw as the future for that area. So, keep the faith, keep the vision, keep it going, and do it right.
It's a marathon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We did talk a little bit with Bloomington Public Health about vaccinations, and coincidentally, this evening, we've got Tim Mulcrone here with us, from District 5950 for Rotary. And we're going to recognize World Polio Day, and I'm going to read first, Tim, the proclamation, and then I'll allow you to speak a little bit, once we finish that. And I think you'll find that one of those side podiums will work better, unless you have an overhead that you want to use. All right, so bear with me here. So this is the, the proclamation, recognizing World Polio Day, whereas Rotary International and Rotary Clubs of District 5950, including Rotary Club of Edina, and the Rotary Club of Edina Morningside, have been engaged in a 30-year campaign to eradicate polio worldwide. And whereas Rotary brings 105 years of history to this initiative, its members are business, professional, and community leaders who provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. 32,000 Rotary Clubs located in more than 200 countries and geographical areas build coalitions and initiate service projects to address today's challenges, including illiteracy, disease, hunger, poverty, lack of clean water, and environmental concerns. And whereas when Rotary began its mission to eradicate polio, more than 350,000 children in 125 countries were stricken with polio every year, and nearly 1,000 people were affected by the crippling disease every day. Since then, polio cases have been reduced by 99% to 359 cases in 2014. And whereas today, only two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan, remain polio-endemic. Due to the efforts of Rotary and its partners, the world is on the threshold of ending polio forever, make it, making it only the second disease after smallpox to be eradicated. And whereas public awareness, advocacy, and funding remain crucial to Rotary and its partners, the World Health Organization, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Edina, that the City Council recognizes October 24, 2015, as World Polio Day in the City of Edina, coincides with the Edina Day of Service, and also the TEDx festivities here. Is, so, is there a motion to adopt the proclamation and designate October 24, 2015, as World Polio Day in the City of Edina? So moved?
So moved. Second?
We got a motion of second to adopt the proclamation. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Post say nay. Carried. Tim, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of Rotarians everywhere, I'd like to thank you for bringing awareness to our efforts to eradicate polio in the world. Through awareness, we can grow advocacy and funding. Many of our parents and our grandparents know firsthand the fear of polio that was common in the 40s and in the- grandparents know firsthand the fear of polio that was common in the 40s and in the 50s. I'm sure they are also very grateful for this today. Since 1955, the world has had a cheap and effective vaccine to prevent polio. But 30 years later, there were still over 350,000 cases in 125 countries. Rotary said, "That's ridiculous." And we set out to eradicate polio in the world. We courted the World Health Organization, UNICEF, Centers for Disease Control, the governments of every country in the world. It's been 30 more years now since then. And now, for this year, we're at 51 cases of polio for this year in two countries. And that's compared to 242 cases for the same period of time last year. The success over polio is undeniable. The work we have done has developed healthcare initiatives in places in the world that never had healthcare before. That infrastructure has been credited with the ability to identify and stop the Ebola virus from spreading last year. And Dr. William Fagie, the former head of the Centers for Disease Control, speaks regularly of the relationship between improved healthcare initiatives and peace. That's the plus in the program that Rotarians know as Polio Plus. And who would have thought by your actions today that we would be here tonight advancing a peace initiative as well? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. You know, one of the organizations that wasn't mentioned, and I'm going to walk down, they want to take, want to take a photo of you with the proclamation. The Gates Foundation, who was, has been a great partner with Rotary in this effort to eradicate polio worldwide. And it was, I want to make sure we, we give a shout-out for them as well.
We should give them a shout-out. The Bill Melinda Gates Foundation has put in nearly a billion dollars towards this effort. They have committed up to $35 million in a two-to-one match for every dollar raised by Rotarians each year through 2018. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Having had a mother who had polio when I was about one, and having to drink those little Dixie cups when the first polio vaccination was given in that form, I may have had more than one, if I remember correctly. I think she used the theory, "If one is good, two could be better." Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got Jordan Gilgenbach, who's going to do his Speak Up Edina presentation for us this evening on, I think, Styrofoam containers. Something that's due for a conversation, I think.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Jordan Gilgenbach. I'm a communications coordinator here at the city. And I am here again this month to give you the latest Speak Up Edina discussion report. Like the mayor mentioned, in September, we focused on Styrofoam. Just a little background for those who are unaware, speakupedina.org is the city civic engagement website that we've had for, going on, I think, three years now. The last year, almost two years now, we've been hosting a monthly discussion on the website on varying topics. And I've been here every month since then, giving you guys the, the report on those. Like I mentioned, September, we focused on Styrofoam. We asked the following questions. Do you think Styrofoam containers should be banned in Edina? Why or why not? Do you think requiring other containers, such as reusable, recyclable, or compostable options are better, or just as harmful? And if Styrofoam containers were banned, would you reuse, recycle, or compost those containers rather than just throw them in the trash? This discussion was open from August 27 to October 9, so a little over a month. And it had a shockingly low participation rate. We only received seven comments on this one. The site had a little over 500 visitors, total just about 750 visits, total 2,500 page views. All but one, actually, all, all of the comments are from Edina. I misspoke there. All of these comments verbatim are in, as part of your packet. Here are the comments this month. People say that, the commenters say that there are plenty of other alternatives. It's the responsible thing to do. It could also start the conversation again for organics, recycling, or composting. In general, when Styrofoam is thrown out into, into the general, you know, open, open environment, it's ugly and difficult to clean up, especially when it starts to become brittle from sunlight. It creates tiny little beads all over the place that nobody can ever clean up. Banning is the better option, leaving the world in a more habitable shape for future generations. People seem, or the commenters seem to reuse them if it's available, the alternative containers, or would compost or recycle them if they are able to do so. And that Edina schools are doing a good job currently of teaching their students to compost and recycle. So it's helping to spread that mindset against, or around the entire community. This one commenter thought would be more beneficial. Currently this month through November 9, we're talking about parks, recreation, and programming, asking what residents think about our parks and the programs that are offered through the Parks and Recreation Department. The following month, we're going to focus on Chief Nelson over here on public safety. With that, I'll take any questions you guys might have on this one.
Member Stottan, question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jordan, how long have we been doing Speak Up Edina?
When did we launch it? I think it was June 2012?
January 2012.
January 2012.
So going on almost three years. Where does this rank in terms of participation for a month?
This one is the bottom now.
Yeah. It was the one thing that stood out for me was just the lack of participation, even though you hear about this issue from time to time. But any, any interpretation of the data you can give us? I know there were only seven comments, but how do the page views and, you know, is it that people weren't seeing it, or is it that they just weren't commenting, but it was similar to the number of people who saw other items?
It may be a combination of both. We did a discussion, I think about the same time last year about plastic bans, or plastic bag bans. That one also had a pretty low response rate on that. Not as low as this one, but one of the lower ones that we received. So I think it could be a combination of both, that either we were hitting people when, you know, we're right back to school, or still busy with other things in the summer, right before school started, that, and maybe the topic just wasn't as much of an interest to others.
Yeah, it's interesting. You're, you're starting to get enough of a sample size that you probably could do some analysis of the statistics to see if there's certain times of the year that are just always going to be sluggish regardless of the topic, or certain times of the year that will be really great. It'd be interesting as you're, you know, as you, I think this is really valuable. And as you continue to do it, I'd be interested in more, more of a dive into what you think about not only what is said, but how many people are participating and how they're participating. So, thanks.
I was thinking that that might have been because it was not a sufficiently controversial topic. It seems that everybody says, "Yeah, we should definitely ban Styrofoam."
Didn't have a good discussion. What's there to debate?
Right.
Well, and the, the thing that, that I see, there are seven comments among about four people.
Four, yep.
Yeah.
Very low.
So it is very low. And so maybe it is something that doesn't rise to the top of what they're thinking about. But it happened to be something that these four people commented on. So, but they are all unanimous in their view, which I thought was interesting. That doesn't always happen. So, so anyway, just a couple of observations.
There's a good little deli in our building that I go down to from time to time. And when you get your lunch to go, and he hands you that clamshell Styrofoam thing with your food in it across the counter, I hate to take it, and he hates to give it to me. And this young guy that's to cook, every time he hands it to me, says, "When you going to tell us that we can't use these things anymore?" Because they don't want to be using them either. So it doesn't seem that complicated to figure out something that will be better for the environment and won't increase the cost for the restaurateurs that, that use them for takeout. So I think we ought to put that on some kind of a list of ours to look at, how to replace Styrofoam with something that's more palatable with the environment, that we can compost, or recycle, or do something with. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I think that's something we could add to, perhaps add to the EEC work plan for the upcoming year to take a look at. I can tell you that we've been talking to our colleagues in St. Louis Park, who've been going through an exhaustive study this year of looking at both plastic bag ban and also the Styrofoam ban. And they have reached some conclusions, I think, that are useful to us. One is that Styrofoam probably wouldn't be that difficult to ban, especially since, especially since Minneapolis has also taken that step. It means that a lot of their, their product wholesalers carry that kind of different product now, the pressed paper product as opposed to the, as opposed to the Styrofoam. So it's readily available. They can buy it. They can buy it at prices that are comparable to Styrofoam. The plastic bag folks, though, will, will punch back. And they've had, they've gone a couple of rounds with them in St. Louis Park. And so that's not going to be quite as easy to, to take on. But from a, from a practical standpoint, it might be something we ask our EEC to take a look at.
That's a great idea.
People comfortable with that in the council? All right, let's do that. All right. Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
We've got one other matter in this portion of the agenda, and that is a extra-mile proclamation 2015, and actually entitled "Extra Mile," date 2015. Whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America, to create 500 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2015. Now therefore, I, James V. Houghman, Mayor of Edina, Minnesota, hereby proclaim November 1, 2015 to be Extra Mile Day in Edina, and urge that each individual in the community take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also accept all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adopt a proclamation of Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Post say nay. Carried. We did this last year as well, and I think it, I hope it's helpful. It, it kind of mirrors a bit the Edina Day of Service on the 24th of October, but maybe we can get some good work done in the community, two Saturdays in a row. All right. Next, we have one public hearing in the public hearing portion of the agenda. And Mr. Ragaman has this, and this is potential certification of delinquent utilities. And this is improvement number DU 15 Resolution 2015-109. Director Ragaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight is the night when we do our annual certification of delinquent utility bills. So I've got just a short presentation to go through about the process before the public hearing is open. So my first slide here is the state statute that enables the city to certify delinquent utility bills to, to the next year's taxes. The next slide after this is the city code section that also enables the city council to certify utility bills to taxes the next year. So this is our process on this slide. It kind of outlines that utility accounts with balances over $50 and delinquent 30 days or longer were notified in writing on September 11 of this year of their pending certification and the date of tonight's public hearing. As of tonight, there was a list included in your packet. That's a current list. We always give people the opportunity to pay between that letter and tonight. If they still haven't paid as of tonight, and the city council adopts the list that was in the packet, a $30 administrative fee will be added to those accounts to help defray the costs of the process. And then customers will continue to have the opportunity to pay their balances until November 13 at City Hall. After November 13, the accounts go to the county, and they can only be paid there. And then they'll be payable next year. The interest rate will be 6.5% in accordance with the city's past practice and policy. And all, all certifications are due within one year. Little bit of history on the process. Just looking back, how does this year compare to previous years? We sent out close to 900 notices this year in September for $400,000 worth of delinquent accounts. A little bit lower than previous years. As of, as of the list that was in your packet for tonight's hearing, we had 489 accounts for $295,000. Also a little bit lower than the past couple of years. Past couple of years, we've had some large, single accounts on the list. This year, the largest account was about $6,000. Next largest was half that. So many smaller accounts in the process this year. And so staff recommends holding a public hearing and then adopting Resolution 2015-109 to certify this year's delinquent utility bills. Any questions?
Questions for Director Ragaman on this issue? Otherwise, I'll open it up for public testimony. All right. All right. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. If anyone is interested in testifying, come on up. You'll have three minutes to testify or make an inquiry of the council or staff. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. All right. Seeing no one coming, coming forward, or hearing anyone from the audience saying they wish to testify, we have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Post say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding this?
I'll move this, but then I have a question.
All right. We've got a second. We've got a motion and a second, and then question.
So we don't have a couple of the big balances, but we do have a $6,800 one. Is that commercial?
Yes, that is commercial. Thank you, Councilmember Stottan.
Is it the same commercial that we've had before? It's just not as high?
It's not. It's a completely different address. Yes.
Okay. And then the one on Sunny Slope, that's not the commercial we had before? Or that is?
Sunny Slope wouldn't be a commercial.
No, that would be Sunny Side. That's right. Okay. I just wondered if those two particular commercials had paid up.
The numbers are down.
That's good.
Mm-hmm. No, I think that is really good. So, thank you. That's all I have.
The total number of accounts is up, which is curious. So.
If we could get at least 300,000, then we'd save a point on the general levy. Go to it.
I think that's counted in your budget already, Mayor.
Probably is.
Okay.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Voice vote. Roll call vote. We've got a mixed vo, mixed message here.
It's a roll call for the action. It's a, it's a voice vote for the motion to close the hearing.
All right. Says voice vote to adopt the resolution. So, okay. Roll call vote.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Stottan?
Aye.
Member Stewart?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Mayor Houghman?
Aye. All right. We're going to now move on to community comment. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council with respect to an issue that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. And there are four, five matters in that portion of the agenda this evening. The first matter is the proposed franchise agreement with Xcel Energy. And Manager Neal has this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item has been to the council on more than one occasion. It's coming back tonight because last week, Xcel Energy took the action to file for the tariff to replace LED streetlights, which is, which is one of the aspects that's been holding up our, our completion of, of the action on the franchise agreement. The franchise agreement itself hasn't changed. The ordinance has not changed since you saw it last. It's the same basic document. The two things that have changed, though, are two, two issues that will be part of a side agreement that comes back to the council when we read the, when you read the second reading of the ordinance on November 4. And those two items have to do with LED streetlights and have to do with the maintenance of the, of the ground equipment. Two issues that we have
of the ground equipment, two issues that we have reached tentative agreement with the company on, and I recommend the council take action to read the ordinance and approve the ordinance for the first time tonight.
All right, thanks. Questions for Manager Neil regarding this proposed franchise agreement with XL Energy?
I'll move this issue.
Second.
Second. All right. Discussion?
Let's see. The only discussion I have is, I guess it was just in the memo and maybe the MOU needed the dates to be completed out with years, and that's been done?
It hasn't, but it will be. So Councilmember Brindle asked me today to clarify what years I was talking about, which is a fair question, because this is the kind of thing that can go on for years. In our case, the, all of the years included in this document will be 2015. We started the discussions earlier this year, and we will complete the discussions this year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll vote. All those in favor of adopting the proposed franchise agreement with XL Energy embodied in ordinance 2015-12, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie, I want to thank Michelle Swanson from XL for being here this evening to answer any questions that might have come up, and also for your level of cooperation, good level of cooperation in dealing with Manager Neil.
Tough dude.
Yeah.
We are her favorite. We are her favorite city. You should know that.
I'm sure she told you that.
She did.
All right. Moving on to the next matter in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, we have proposed adoption of liquor ordinance. And Mr. Nundorf has this matter. We had it on discussion a couple of weeks ago, and he has some new information for us and some further revision work that he's done. So, Mr. Nundorf, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. This evening, we have ordinance 2015-20 to amend our Chapter IV regarding alcoholic beverages. After the conversations at the last two council meetings, we modified the proposed ordinance using the strikeout and underline format to show some of the points of discussion the last couple of weeks. Have also made those proposed revisions, made our restaurant tours aware of that, reached out to the Minnesota Restaurant Association, our Chamber of Commerce, the 50th and France Association. And while the Restaurant Association did not feel that some of the provisions were necessary, they did not find them objectionable at all. So, that being said, we haven't, I haven't heard anything in the last week from our local businesses regarding any of these changes that they would find unacceptable to them. Earlier today, Councilmember Brindle did identify two paragraphs that had some typos and some confusing languages. So we did fix those, and there was an amendment on your diast this evening. So that being said, present this for your discussion and consideration.
Questions for Mr. Nundorf? Or council comments on this matter? It did seem like you captured most of what we talked about last time. Commend you for that.
Member Staunton. Thank you for, oh, sorry, but just thank you for picking up those things that I sent in.
Happy to do it.
All right. Member Staunton.
I wanted to ask, and maybe it's for you, Bill, or for Manager Neil, on the over-serving, I noticed we added a provision into the ordinance. Is there any, any other kind of information that you want to pass along about the discussions that we might have had? I know we talked about place of last drink data and the department following up on that. Is there any, anything to elaborate on that in terms of techniques or things we're thinking about on that?
Well, I think we did have a meeting with all the staff concerned with the ordinance, including Mr. Nundorf and Chief Nelson, city clerk, and myself, and a couple of others, and had the discussion about that issue because the council had expressed some concern. We think the best way to deal with that is through the training that we mandate the servers have. We mandate that, we mandate that training so we can have some influence over the content of the training, and that's where Chief Nelson and his staff can exert some influence in that area, and we're going to, we're going to do that in the future.
Yeah, I certainly think it's important to not only do the training, but to, you know, I think for folks who are in, on the front line, so to speak, making these decisions, that they have the support of the establishment, that, you know, that they ought to be making those decisions and they get backed up, because I know that's a tough, that's a tough spot to be in if you're a bartender or a waiter or waitress and you're, you think it's not appropriate to give another drink, but they go to management and management tells you, give them another drink. So I think we ought to be touching base with management as well as with the line staff.
All right. Any other questions? This is the second reading. We would be adopting this on a roll call basis and implementing it immediately. Member Staunton.
You, you said that you had been talking to our area restaurants. In part of that conversation, did you have the food truck, taproom, cocktail lounge? Or were you only talking about the changes we were making to 60-40?
The recent, my recent conversations with the restaurant tours has been limited to the liquor ordinance.
Okay.
The taproom ordinance was not part of that conversation.
Okay. I knew Carrie has the taproom one coming up, so I, but I wanted to take this chance to ask you if there'd been any feedback yet. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we have set the effective date of the ordinance on January 1, 2016.
That gives us a little bit of time to prepare for it and for the licensed premises to prepare
to.
I have a question.
All right. Member Brindle.
Bill, this ordinance language says for training, at least 75% of the staff. Now, I know that's been in the ordinance in the past because I looked at it and I thought, well, why isn't it like 100% of the staff would be trained? Why are we comfortable with 75% of the staff being trained? We, I mean, we've been comfortable with it, evidently, but why are we comfortable with that?
We actually discussed that at great length amongst our staff, and I think part of the reason that we feel comfortable today is that it's proven to work. The challenge can be when you first hire, if you require 100% compliance, that means before you can even hire someone.
They can't work.
They have to have the training, but how can, it's, you run into that, into that snafu where you'll never have 100% full compliance at the first instance. So we had talked actually about increasing it to 75, 80, 85, 90, but at that point, it just became kind of a conversation. I'm throwing a number out there. The 75% seems to work. It's served us well in the past. We typically get rates that are higher than that, but we felt it wasn't necessary to change it at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
All right. Member Stewart, anything? Member Staunton, anything further? All right. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll move the matter.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Stewart.
Aye.
Member Swanson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Houghman.
Aye. All right. Next matter is related to us allowing, potentially allowing brew pubs, taprooms, wineries, distilleries. Director Teague, you've got this matter, but it seems like an odd marriage. I'm not used to thinking about this as a land use issue, so I'd be, I'd be eager to see how you, how comfortable you are talking about this.
Yes, it actually is very much a land use issue at this point. So in conjunction with the changes that you've been contemplating and now have made, the planning commission over the last couple of months have been considering, where should these uses be located within the city? So currently, a brewery or a distillery would be allowed in town, but only in the industrial district as a manufacturing. We wouldn't allow taprooms, you know, where they're serving the alcohol that they're producing on the site. And we don't allow brew pubs in town. Brew pub being a restaurant that manufactures its own beer and serves it, because we don't allow manufacturing within our commercial zoning district. So currently, taprooms and brew pubs are not allowed in town. So what we've, what we, three things have gone into our consideration. We did a survey of other communities and how they regulate these types of uses. We're a little bit behind the times, so to speak, with this. A lot of other cities have adopted ordinances. Those have been included in your packet. Staff also went and drove around and visited some of these sites to get a feel for how they operate. On a Friday afternoon, I drove around and covered the Twin Cities.
Good bet you did.
Yes.
You must, too, there.
Did you have a high level of participation in that study?
It was just myself. I didn't go inside. They're all, as you see, the pictures, you'll see, they're all of the outside. So that, and also based on some of the discussions that the councils had over the last month or so, we've taken some of those considerations into this ordinance, in particular in regard to food being served associated with a taproom. So with that, I'll quickly go through my, my survey of taprooms in the Twin Cities, just to get you a little bit of a feel for, for these uses. So the Steel Toe Brewing Brewery, this is in St. Louis Park, located within an industrial park. You'll notice over here, there is a food truck. This was Friday afternoon, about 2:00. Parking lot's pretty empty, but there were a few people over at the food truck. So you can see the taproom out front with the brewery in back. Minnetonka has a taproom, the Lucid Brewery, and this is in a kind of a business industrial park. There's really not much sign of the business itself. It's all the way around in the back. This is a door into the taproom, and you can see that the brewery is behind, it didn't turn out very well in the picture, but that's where all the, all the brewing is taking place. Next is the Excelsior Tap Room. So this is a brewery and taproom that's located within the commercial zoning district, right in their downtown. The ordinance that's before you, we're not proposing taprooms or breweries to be allowed in our commercial zoning district. Part of the concern here, maybe I caught them on a bad day, but they, they did have these kegs stored outside. There was a delivery truck here, so it may have been a loading operation that was going on. You can see, this was the truck there, right across the street. They're building, townhomes are under construction, so right across the street. Within the ordinance, no outside storage is allowed, even in the industrial district, so that type of continual outside storage would not be allowed. White Bear Lake had a taproom where there was no visible storage or activities going on. This was interesting in that this parking lot, about single-family homes right across the street, so they have single-family homes right across from this taproom. Stillwater, the Lift Bridge, you see the taproom out front with the brewery in back. This was in their industrial park. Then we get into some of the ones in Minneapolis. This is the Urban Growler. This is a brew pub, so this is a restaurant where they do brew their own. They had a little outdoor patio. This was in an industrial park. And the Bow House, this is a brewery and taproom where they set up tables outside and they bring in food trucks that are located back here. The 612, the brewery and taproom, they have a pad here for food trucks that come in and serve the customers. Parking was a real issue at this site. It's kind of, it's a shared retail area, and the parking was very tight. So where are they proposed to be allowed? So within our industrial zoning district, the PID district, we're proposing that taprooms, breweries, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms would be allowed as a permitted use subject to specific conditions being met, such as noise, parking regulations, those types of standard type of conditions. So those areas would be along 169 in the Lincoln Drive area, along Washington Avenue, along 169, within our industrial park between Cahill and Metro Boulevard, the Seagate area south of the Link property. And then the areas here that are highlighted in the Grandview District, this is our old public worksite, the bus garage, and two properties that are owned by the church. It's the old Warner Engineering Site. So the likelihood of these remaining industrial, probably when they redevelop, probably not as industrial uses. So those would be the areas where those uses would be allowed. Then in regard to brew pubs, they're proposed to be allowed within our commercial zoning districts. So that would be within our small commercial nodes, the 44th and France, 50th and France, Grandview area, out on Lincoln Drive, 169. This is that little strip mall there where there's D. Bryan's. 70th and Cahill, the Link property, and the Greater Southdale area, the Southdale and Centennial Lakes area, and then Valley View and Wooddale. So to address the issue that the council talked about, is serving food at taprooms, the planning commission is suggesting that food trucks would be allowed as a permitted accessory use only to a taproom, so that's only within our, within our industrial district. We had discussion about allowing them just in these areas so as not to impact our brick and mortar restaurants. These areas are generally removed from our commercial areas. There's not a lot of options for workers in the area, and the thinking, too, is to help the taprooms be successful, to allow a food truck just as an accessory use to the taproom. So the ordinance that's before you is recommended by staff and the planning commission. You're asked to just consider first reading this evening, and by our city code, we have to hold a public hearing, so that would be scheduled at your November 4th for consideration of potentially second reading and then holding of that public hearing. With that, we can stand for any questions you might have.
Member Swanson.
So the yellow, yellow areas would be, food trucks would be allowed. The other nodes, like 50th and France, 44th and France, it's a different use, so no food trucks.
Correct.
The only comment that you made, which I agree with you, was in the Grandview area, where I don't really see that as an industrial area anymore. Part of our goal with food trucks was not to have them necessarily compete head-to-head with our restaurants. We have a few there, not a lot. And I'm wondering, because that area is planned for a change and will, it will happen in the next few year to three years, would be my guess, maybe that's not an area we want to include. Can we exclude it?
That's a little challenging without, without rezoning those specific sites. It might be, you know, it might, we might want to consider rezoning those properties now, although we probably want to do some kind of a PUD, maybe with both the bus garage site and the public worksite. But I think that that's a, it's, it's, you have to treat each zoning district equally, so to exclude a use within a property that's zoned the same.
Well, two, the properties are torn down, Public Works and the Warner property. The only working piece right now is the bus garage, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
And are those the only three properties within that area that are considered?
They are. That's right.
So either Our Lady of Grace can open up a brew pub, the city of Edina could, or the, or we could sell it to someone who could, or the school district could sell it to someone who could.
Potentially, correct. Oh, but not a brew pub, but just the taproom.
Taproom, sorry. I, sorry, I mixed those two up.
Mr. Mayor. Member Swanson.
So you mentioned PUD. Even if we limit it to industrial areas, we could permit a taproom within a PUD?
We could.
Okay. And then we would have the flexibility to add whatever conditions, like it might be a taproom, but no food trucks allowed with it, for instance?
Could do that, yep.
Okay. And then the food truck permission, is that, is that on the property owned by the licensee, or would that be on public property?
It would be on the property that's owned by the licensee, so we would set up a licensing procedure with our health department.
So they can't just pull up on the street and do that?
Exactly. Correct.
I mean, one other way to perhaps, because I am sympathetic to the same, I mean, I think the food truck ought to be a, an accessory use, but just if it's in a, in the kind of industrial area where some of the pictures- the kind of industrial area where, some of the pictures you showed that are way away from anything else, but it's nice to have food nearby, because I don't think it's fair to let the food trucks compete with the brick and mortar business that has a lot of other expenses, and, and we want them to do well. Having said that, I, I actually think that, that Grandview area, that, that a taproom might fit in, in that, when everything's said and done, and it might be an interesting piece to the puzzle, but I wouldn't want a food truck in there if there are other restaurants. So, one, one thing we might consider amending is just, the food trucks can go along with it, but provided there's no other, what, restaurant within a certain distance, is that something we could do?
I think that's something that we could, yeah, we can take a look at that for, for second reading.
Roger.
There'd be a potential issue for the, for that taproom, if the restaurant comes in after the taproom is established. So maybe you'd want to refine that to say, a restaurant that exists at the time it's initially licensed, or?
Yeah. Then at least when a restaurant's coming in, they know what they're getting into. I'm not sure what the exact right answer is, but I, I agree with Member Swenson when she said that we, we want to be careful not to, not to put our brick and mortar restaurants in the position of being competed with by four wheels pulling up anytime.
Manager Neal.
One alternative that some taprooms have done in this matter is, is to have, develop good relationships with the surrounding restaurants and allow those restaurants to deliver food straight into the taproom, or, and that's been pretty successful in places.
Yeah, in fact, that's, that's a lot of what happens in the one in Excelsior, because it is really in a downtown. So it is interesting, some of these are off in industrial parks that are really deserted, and there's no activity, but others, there's a few like, like the accessory one that are right in the middle of a downtown, and then they can leverage off of the restaurants that are around to either deliver, or you stop and have a beer there, and then you go on to the restaurant, and there is some synergy. That's what makes me think that it might fit in, depending on what the whole Grandview area ends up looking like.
Roger, if the, if the food truck is ancillary or accessory use to the, to the taproom, or the brew, is it the taproom, right? And we're only allowing taprooms in commercial industrial districts, could you designate the commercial industrial districts where the accessory use was allowed, and designate commercial industrial districts where the accessory use wasn't allowed, to keep the food trucks out of Grandview?
You could try to put in some criteria as to where they can be located. I suppose it'd be unusual, but you could put something, and you can't have them at that location, even though it's zoned that way. You can, food, food trucks are allowed every place in the district except, you could have an exception, I suppose.
Yeah, when I think about Grandview, Kevin and I were just talking, I don't think anything's going to develop without a PUD designation on it, so I guess my fear for that area is, because then we can, we cry or no food truck.
The reason I've been a little reluctant to go to a PUD at Grandview is because on our give-to-get strategy, if we want affordable housing, and it's already PUD, have we given, have we given that up as a bargaining chip with a potential developer?
Right, if we change, if we change the designation now. Nope, I agree with you. We don't want to do that.
So that's why I was concerned about changing it to PUD over by Grandview now, or changing to a PUD.
Well, I mean, we've already got a couple of restaurants there, if you did the, if you did the no food trucks within a certain distance of existing restaurants, that would probably eliminate at least the food truck portion over there.
You have restaurants, though, in that?
And in the 70th and Cahill.
Yeah, not 70th Cahill, well, that's not on this, but the, in the huge industrial area where our public worksite is.
Down at the?
There's restaurants in the middle of buildings you don't even know are there. So that, that does cause a little bit of an issue if we throw in that, in that area. We have a new little strip mall going in that's going to have restaurants.
Right across the street from the industrial?
Yeah, there's one, just a block away from the public worksite, in the middle of one of those big office buildings.
Member Swenson, I think 70th and Cahill is included, if I read the map properly.
You could do a brewery, only in the industrial district, you could do a brew pub up in the commercial area, the area that's highlighted in red here.
But a brew pub can't have food truck.
Correct.
Right.
So.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. In the alcoholic beverages ordinance that we just adopted, 4-9-10-B6, the licensed premises shall be at least 500 feet from a single dwelling unit and, and other residential Is there anything like that in the, in this brew pub taproom ordinance?
There's not, but any of those uses, they would need a liquor license, so that, that would apply.
Oh, okay, so this will apply to that?
It will.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay.
Well, they need a liquor license.
I guess, I, you know, as far as the food truck is concerned, we go to taprooms, and they have food trucks, and there aren't restaurants right there, kind of north of Minneapolis area.
I think we'd like to provide food, don't we?
Yeah, oh, I think it's, it's necessary, we would love to have them have food.
I think it's, the only question is, do we want them to be able to operate in the Grandview area? And if they're, if we don't, is there some way to preclude that, but allow it in other parts of the commercial industrial district?
Well, I think what Kevin suggested would do that, because?
The pre-existing restaurant.
The pre-existing restaurant is, is going to help that.
Do you want to write it up and see what it looks like, so we can see it for next reading? How about that?
We could take it on a first reading basis.
We'll take it on first reading, yeah.
We are on first reading anyway, probably.
Yeah, right.
Manager Nundorf just pointed out the provision that you were referring to only applied to the, was it?
The entertainment.
Yeah, the entertainment.
It's the gaming.
Gaming classification.
Oh, the 500 feet isn't, oh, it is.
So we could adopt something like that?
Yeah.
For Grandview, if we wanted to.
You know, I think it would be important.
500-foot radius for?
I, I do, I do like that, for protection of schools and residential churches.
Edina Grill serves alcohol, and right above are residences.
Yeah, I, I think you, there is certain, in the right, right, in the right environment, this fits into an urban environment, where you're going to have residential kind of mixed in with?
Well, we're looking at an apartment building that has a restaurant on first floor, and I'm certain they're going to serve liquor at 66th and Xerxes.
Exactly.
So, you know, it, it's the right environment, and, and they will be next door to Edina Liquor Store.
You're more worried about the food truck and interaction, rather than?
Yeah, I wasn't worrying about the single-family home radius, I was just thinking about the 500-foot radius and use a restaurant as a?
Oh, for the restaurant, for the competing restaurant with the food truck. That's, I think that's not a bad idea.
So I'll move this, and then you'll bring back language that we could add for second reading?
I can do that.
All right, we have a second.
Do you have a second?
Second, first reading.
And other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And now we're on to the one that Member Swenson's been waiting for since 7:00 this evening.
Well, now, Member Brindle's probably supportive of this one, too.
This is?
Does your dog go to, wouldn't your dog like to go to a restaurant?
Oh, he loves restaurants.
Okay.
Get him his own beer?
No, no, I never do.
You can't.
No, no, no.
Part of the ordinance doesn't allow the dogs to use the plates, et cetera, or sit at the table on a chair. They have to be well behaved on a leash.
Right. He always is.
You don't want that dog drinking and driving.
He's at our feet.
Yep.
Yep.
So thank you, Bill, for bringing this forward.
Sure thing, this is ordinance 2015-22, that would amend Chapter 20 of the code, and it would officially allow restaurants to allow dogs in outdoor cafes, outdoor seating areas. It's a fairly simple ordinance, brought up as part of our conversation in the last couple weeks about rewriting our liquor ordinances. This is a provision that is allowable by state law, provided that the city allows it. Our city attorney had pointed that fact out to us. The only clarification I would really offer on this is that this does not mandate?
No.
That a restaurateur allow animals in their outdoor facility? If the restaurateur is not on board with that, they don't have to, but if they're agreeable to it, they can, as long as they get a license from us. The regulatory provisions are pretty minimal, post a sign, educate your employees, and do the right thing. So that being said, I'd offer this, this evening, in order to correlate with the approval, approval of our liquor ordinance, I would request that we approve it on, on the first reading and waive the second, if that would be your desire. I'm available for any questions, as is our city attorney.
Questions for Mr. Nundorf, and also, I'd like to hear from council members about whether they want to waive second reading on this, or take it one step at a time. Member Stewart.
Just to be clear, so if a restaurateur decides to allow dogs on their patio, but a particular dog shows up that's either too rambunctious, or too noisy, or too aggressive, they could tell that patron, your dog is not allowed, could they not?
That is exactly correct. There is a restriction on?
There's the nasty dog line in it.
Yeah, Roger, do you recall the terminology? But if, if it is a dog that is dangerous, or not appropriate in that setting, they are allowed to?
Effectively, like a establishment owner can refuse service to an individual that they choose to refuse service to.
It's still their business, they can run it as they feel appropriate.
So, and I am amenable to waiving second reading. So we're clear, this, under this ordinance, I don't want to pick on a dog. If I don't like a certain breed of dog, and I'm the owner, and even though I'm licensed and they can allow them, I could say, Chihuahuas cannot come in my, because I don't like Chihuahua. You can keep them after any reason you want. This allows them?
It's a Minnesota, it's reverse to the Minnesota statute.
Statute.
Thank you, about dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs, so it's not, we're not describing that, that's, the state does that job, and I'll move this, including?
In second reading.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to pass this matter and waive second reading discussion?
The real question is whether the, the owner has any obligation to not over-serve the dogs. Sorry, a little uppity. I interrupted your rhythm, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
You did.
Member Brindle, she completely blanked out now, what she was going to?
No, I, I'm ready to move, I'm waiting second reading, moving this for a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Member Swenson.
Yes, aye.
Member Brindle. Aye. Member Staunton.
Aye.
Member Stewart.
Aye.
Mayor Havelin.
Aye. I'm thinking about that commercial, where those golden retrievers are driving down the road.
Oh, that is the best golden commercial, thank you.
All-star barking, including the puppy in the baby seat at the, at the mail truck. It's pretty good.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right. Resolution 2015-89, accepting various donations and grants. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, second, to adopt resolution 2015-89, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. In this reporting period, we thank folks for their gifts, we have to approve them under Minnesota law, we cannot accept them without a four-fifth vote of the council, and we have a group of in-kind gifts from, for Park and Rec, the Edina Arts Center, from a variety of folks. Their names will appear on the city website. Braemar Golf Course, the Braemar Golf Association, $1,254.54 gift to the Braemar Park and Rec Department, and Police Department got a couple of nice gifts as well. So thanks to those folks in our community and organizations as well. All right. Any other correspondence in front of us, other than what we had on the dais this evening?
No, there's not, sir.
All right. And aviation noise update, either Member Swenson or Manager Neal have anything to update us on?
Have we sent out an extra for the NAC 101 meeting that will be here on the, it's a week from tonight? Dana Nelson from the NAC will be here, and it is at?
7:00.
7:00. Are we televising that?
We are taping it for rebroadcast.
That would be great. I think that's wonderful. She has promised to maybe not answer all questions directly, because some she likes to take back and get statistics for, but she will be taking questions at the end of her talk, and I'm really hoping that we fill the room. Do we have someone that will help be a moderator for that?
I'm planning to attend, I don't know if other, if council members are planning to attend. But, but she will need some, just support to kick off the evening and get it going.
Yeah, and, and to keep?
What's, what's that date?
Next Tuesday night, the 27th, 7:00 PM here. And I think our expectation is that our residents will ask questions in a, in a cordial manner, if that doesn't happen.
We'll deal with it.
We'll deal with it. Okay, that was my moderator part of it.
Okay. All right. Manager Neal, any follow-up?
No follow-up beyond that.
Member Stewart, on that same issue?
And the correspondence, Manager Neal, you and I exchanged a little bit of information this week. One of our residents was concerned about the proliferation of signs on their parkway, and I, I think part of the issue was, just some of the things that we're required to have on our roadways, made it very difficult to sort of limit the number of signs, although it does seem like an extraordinarily high number.
Councilmember Stewart, members of council, this is not a, an issue that, well, this is a common issue, actually, I'll, I'll say. People are surprised, especially after a reconstruction project, when all the signs are taken down, how many signs are put placed, are put back, and then occasionally, we're adding signs to that level to comply with MINDOT standards, or the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Device Standards as well. So it, it is surprising, I can tell you that our default impulse, when we think about signing, is less signs. We, the past councils have been concerned about sign pollution, so they have, I think, driven that home with staff, so our, we're typically, from a staff standpoint, we are reluctant to put up signs that aren't required from a regulatory standpoint.
We also tend to put, for instance, the no parking signs on a lot line, so that it isn't right in front of someone's house, so I think, we've had a lot of conversation over the years for street projects, about what our expectations are, and Public Works has worked really hard to assign placement, so.
This may be an unfortunate exception, is that one home, there were going to be eight signs in front, so it seems like a lot.
Well, maybe we, have you asked staff to take a look at it, Manager Neal?
Yeah, we can.
All right, thank you. All right. Council comments. Member Stewart, council comments.
Yes. October 7th, I attended a meeting that was sponsored by the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District called Sand, Salt, and Snow, which talked about the use of those things for keeping the roads safe in the winter. There is real tension, but ultimately, safe streets are going to win, I think, but there are good, good ways and good science to reducing the amount of salt that we're putting in the streets, so, but it's, salt is rather insidious, once it gets into your groundwater and into your, it's very difficult to remove, so important to do what we can to limit that. And we had a couple of our commissioners attending as well, so I thought it was good to see them there. On October the 8th, Manager Neal and I both attended an HRC listening session. We had a series of sessions sponsored by our Gave the chance to bring citizens together and to talk about, really, whatever issues affected their lives in terms of living in the community and feeling of welcome and feeling of sort of unfair treatment at times and different things. So a very interesting session. My compliments to the Human Rights Commission for sponsoring those listening sessions. And Arnie Bigby did a great job of hosting ours. October 10th, I attended an author's series at the Edina Arts Center. An author named Chuck Logan came and spoke. It was very interesting, actually. And I commend them. I could not stay longer than an hour, and they ended sharply at one hour. So I think that's their practice. It's the first time I've attended one of those. On Sunday, October the 11th, attended the very interesting tour of the cemetery on France Avenue. I'll probably get this pronunciation wrong. Adath Yashurin Cemetery. And Mayor Hovland and his wife were there. But fascinating to learn some of that history. That cemetery predates Edina, I think, and goes, has a lot of history there. So it's very interesting. And then today, attended a policy advisory committee meeting for the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. I'm on that committee. And I think that group is off to a good start. This has only been our second meeting. As we all know, Friday is that ribbon cutting this coming Friday for the Three Rivers Trail...
Groundbreak.
Groundbreaking. Yes. So that'll be right down there at the Fred Richards, near where the former golf course building is located. The Historical Society is having a community discussion on programming at 10:00 on Saturday morning. That competes with Member Staunton's TED Talk, so I'll let him promote that. Halloween is coming up. It's on a Saturday this year. Please be mindful with parties out and kids out and everything else, just we want to have a safe Halloween. So please, everybody, slow down, be safe, and take care of your kids. And November 3rd is Election Day. We have a school board election here in Edina, and that means our next meeting of the City Council is on a Wednesday, the 4th.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
All right. Thank you. I have a couple of things. I want to give a shout out to the, about the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and held the Fall Into the Arts Festival at Centennial Lakes. And I probably mentioned this last time, but I think it's worth mentioning again. We just had a fund meeting, and the ballpark numbers on the proceeds from that event, the net proceeds, are $50,000. And what happens to those proceeds is that the crime fund invests 50% of those proceeds, and the city of Edina receives the other 50%. And what the city of Edina does is, last year, I think it was the first year of this arrangement, half of their proceeds get allocated to the art center and half to Centennial Lakes. And, and truth be told, the other 50% that sits in the crime fund comes to the city in the form of dollars that are requested by the police department for special programs and support that the police department needs. So, so it's a huge, wonderful event. And 258 artists, 12 food vendors, lots of, probably 10, 15, 20,000 people show up to it on average every year. So, so it's really, it's really terrific. So I wanted to just tell people how, really how successful that is. On October 15th, Ralph and I attended the celebration at Mari Oskom's home on Dakota Trail. She held a little reception at her house in honor of the landmark designation of her home as historic in our city. And it was delightful. There were several people there who were present with Mari when she was here, and they are, they're really historians in their own ways, and they could all write a book about what they know. But she is so proud of her home and delighted that the city of Edina values it as a unique architectural gem, which we do. I received a MINDOT bulletin today about the 35W project that will involve replacing the bridge over, over the Minnesota River between Bloomington and Burnsville. And that's a bitter pill to swallow. That is going to be a very tough project. And it's slated for 2020, but they are already talking about it. I did hear an estimation that it might even start before that. But, but that is coming up. Regarding the Highway 169 project that's scheduled to close 169 next year, I received assurance that both the 494 project and the Highway 100 project will be finished before 169 starts. Valley View Road construction in our neighborhood is going well. I, the only, the only comments I've heard have been positive. I know this was one that was, was a tough one going into it. For, for some of the folks along Valley View, the front yards are shallow. And so the roundabout, the landscaping in the roundabout is, is beautiful. The landscaping along the roadway in the boulevard is also very nice. It's a combination of perennial salvia and day lilies. So it's very pretty. And so lighting and signage, are those yet to come? Do we have any lighting coming with this project?
They are. They're coming real soon, hopefully next week or the week after.
Okay. So there'll be some lighting at the, at the roundabout?
At the roundabout, for sure. That's required by state standards. But then we've got decorative lighting going along the sidewalk, all the way to the frontage road at 169.
All right. And then signage at the roundabout? Ralph encountered someone making a left the wrong way in the roundabout the other day. So...
Signage is coming real soon, too.
Okay. All right. Well, the project has gone very smoothly. It was a rainy summer, so things moved along a little slower than usual. It was the first time we'd ever seen a container that actually sat there and pulled the water out of the ground, so they could work. And a note for Director Bennerott, that I like the cameras. My wrinkles aren't nearly as obvious. It's so nice. Yeah.
That's just on your screen.
It's just on my screen. Excellent. It's only with my glasses off. Maybe that's what it is.
That's what you get right now.
Member Swenson?
I think I'll pass on that.
Mr. TED Talk?
All right. So a couple of things that I did want to, let me start by saying that I had the chance, I want to commend Councilmember Brindle for helping to organize a series of community conversations on advanced care in our community. She circulated books to all of us, I think, and invited us to, to conversations that were sponsored by the Southdale YMCA and the Park Nicklet Foundation, centered on a book by Atul Gawande called Being Mortal, which talks about something that all of us, I think, encounter in family or friends with end-of-life issues and how we need to do a better job of being prepared. And I had a chance to go to one a week or so ago at Southdale in the morning, and it was delightful conversation with some great people. And I commend you for your work on putting that together. It's a really important topic, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about what happens from here with that subject.
We're calling Phase Two the Ripple.
Ripple.
The Ripple, because it's having a ripple effect.
Good. Yep. Last week, lost track of what day of the week I'm on. We had our first Partners in Energy meeting. We appointed the committee of 12 or 13 people and are working in collaboration with Exile Energy to basically put together an action plan to help us achieve the objectives that we have so boldly stated in our comprehensive plan for greenhouse gas reduction. And we'll be meeting probably monthly for the next five or six months, and hopefully out of that process will come an action plan for the council to consider. And I alerted the group to the, to the nature of my liaison role, that I would be watching and reporting, but wanted them to do their work, and I would do my best to carry back the message to the council. And then this morning, I had a chance to go to the monthly Community Ed Services Board meeting, which is the, I am the council's representative on that board, and we had an excellent conversation talking about the upcoming TEDx event this Saturday and all the great work that Cheryl Gunness has done, both in her, you know, she has so many hats in our community, working with community ed, but also is a member of our Arts and Culture Commission, and we're lucky to have her. And she's doing a terrific job, and I'm learning a lot about this and all the work that goes into putting this event on. And so I think there's a few tickets left, if people are interested, on Saturday. It should be an exciting and interesting event. But we also talked about just more of the work we can be doing between the city park and rec and the community ed function of the Edina schools to try to collaborate and figure out ways to streamline services that can be available to everyone in the community. I identify the Edina Public Schools only because their community ed is the only community ed, I believe, that's in our community. So I think it's important to work with them, and, and we talk more about that, and they're in the middle of a facilities preparation as they, as they start to think about how to implement the funds that they have, they've been given by the voters in the community. And we are also thinking about the future of certain portions of the community. So I'm continuing to work to try to develop good collaboration on that front. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you. I feel like every day for a week or so, I've been waking up thinking about Sophia Jordan Bakler, little seven-year-old girl who passed away, member of our community. Made me think about an Old English proverb that said, "Death always comes too early or too late." For her, it came way too early. Her mother, you may remember, Member Brindle, Courtney Bakler is a cardiologist with Alina, worked on Deaton with us, live over in the country club. There's a lot of places you can live in this world where you can be a part of a town, and you can have your family gathered around you, you can have a pretty good life. But it's something special to live in a community where the whole town will embrace you when something terrible happens to your family. And that's what's happened with the Baklers. The whole town has embraced them, lifted them up, told them how special they were, and you have our deepest condolences. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have just a couple of items, Your Honor. One is, I'll start with the school district boundary realignment for 71 France. Purpose of this item, under my report tonight, is just to give you an update on the status of this issue. We've, we've discussed this before in, in council settings, and I've given you updates periodically on the status of it in my, in my Friday reports, but it's been, it's been sort of circulating, and it's, and it, I think it's, at this point, I would, I would characterize it as stalled out. So I want to tell you what's happening with it. What you see on the map in front of you is the, where the existing school district line is in this part of town. So the school district line, as you can see, separates the, or excuse me, bisects two of the buildings in the, in the new Byerly's development that we call 71 France. You can see where the, the current grocery store is, and then the three buildings that are, you know, under construction or being, yeah, being constructed right now. And that line between the two school districts runs right through the middle of Buildings A and Buildings B. Building C is entirely within the Edina district. So in this case, the Edina district is, the Byerly's grocery store is in the Edina district, and, and the Richfield district is south of that. And in fact, from this point, it's the Edina district, excuse me, the Richfield district is everything from this point south, all of the Centennial Lakes area, all the way down to our South corporate border. But the purpose of this discussion was to, was to see if we could get the two school districts to figure out a way that they could draw, or redraw, the, the line between their two school districts, so that it didn't run through the middle of not only the two new buildings, but even possibly the, the two older buildings, the York condos, where this line has existed for a number of years and been a pain to our city clerk for every year that it's, it's been there, for obvious reasons. Not only from a, from a voting standpoint, but also just from, from a, from a district standpoint, residents sometimes don't understand where the school district line is, and, and they, in, in most cases, they want to be in a particular district, and, and we run into hard feelings. And so if we can make the line be clearer and where it is on the land, so that people understand it, so that real estate professionals understand it, building managers understand it, we think that's good for everyone. So the proposal, I sat down with both school superintendents individually, and, and then as a group, the three of us did, and we looked at, how could we, how could we put together a, a line movement, or excuse me, a shift in the line between the two districts, so that, so the line was clearer and more logical, and also so that the tax capacity changes were approximately equal between the two districts. And what makes this situation different from the Hopkins district is that, in this case, the Richfield district was interested in, in a potential change. So we had a discussion. We looked at these properties, and, and you can look at the number two, number three, and number four. What the, what the proposal was, was for the number two area and the number three area to move from Richfield to Edina, and from the number four area, which is the Yorktown Continental and the brand-new building in front of it, to move from Edina to Richfield. This was going to be approximately an even exchange. It was going to have more, more tax capacity coming into Edina than into Richfield, but it was, this is what we looked at. This was one way, there are an infinite number of ways to resolve this. This was one way that both superintendents thought might work, because it moved a minimum number of people. I presented this concept, the, the general issue, and this particular concept to the Richfield School Board. They, they did not embrace it, but, but also said that they would consider it. They suggested that they would meet with me at another time, and I could just share information with them. They discussed meeting with the Edina School District, but that did not, but that never came to be. The Edina district has also looked at this, but has, has not pursued it as an organization. Their, their position is that, that it needs to start with the, with the property owners, and the property owners need to advance the issue. And if they do, then, then the school districts can participate in a, in a greater discussion. From a city standpoint, I think we've done all that we can do. What we've done to this point is share information with our mapping system and with our taxing system, and suggested that this be a good idea, and it really hasn't captured their fancy. So at this point, I can tell you that I've told both school superintendents that I don't intend to be the point person for this initiative any longer, but I wish that they would do it, and if they have a need for additional information, we'd be happy to help them.
Thank you. Questions for Manager Neil on that matter?
No.
No, thanks for that. Good report.
Thank you.
Next time, I'm...
I do have just one comment.
Sure.
Because we did, the, the fact that this item was on the agenda tonight did generate some email action today, and... some email action today and, um, and, uh, you know, I'm, this is a very complicated, um, issue. Um, who, you know, who does start the conversation? And, uh, and I think if we can clarify that in this case anyway, um, and, and I don't know, is there something written as to what is the process if somebody wants to move a line? I'm, I understand that I go to the county, I go to the county and I get a petition and I fill that out and I get some signatures. If it's my property that I want to move the line of, then I go to them and do that. Um, but I'm not sure that that's well-understood because I think there's a perception there that since the city council can change zoning and we can make decisions about property, we can also do this. And, and I, I, it's, it's clear to me that it's unclear, but it's also clear to me that we can't, as, as a single body, do this.
Right. It's, in my understanding, Councilmember Brindle and members of council, uh, city councils really have no role in establishing where school district boundaries are, no formal role. Um, you can, you can use the bully pulpit of the council to take a position and, and that's not unusual for city councils to do that. Sometimes not the best idea for city councils to do that, but, but councils do do that in the Twin Cities, but there is a formal process, uh, through, uh, the Minnesota Department of Education and also through county government for, uh, school boundaries to, to be modified. And, but it does start with property owner interest in, in doing that and that's, uh, that's what has happened in the Hopkins situation and, but we haven't seen that happen here yet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You had another matter?
Uh, the next, next item is, is, uh, is, uh, staff response back to a council, uh, question, uh, from some time ago. And this question has to do with televising our board and commission meeting, uh, televising our board and commission meetings. Um, we had an existing practice and, and, and Director Bennerott's probably better at summarizing it and discussing it than I am, but the, the memorandum and it gives you our response to some questions that you asked, uh, asked of us some time ago. And I, I would think I can summarize our response to you that, you know, I think, uh, we, we think from a, from a viewership standard that our current policy doesn't hit the mark very well. Um, I can tell you generally from, uh, from an anecdotal standpoint, board and commission members, uh, generally don't, um, like to be on TV or don't like to be broadcast. Um, that's what we hear from them. Uh, you make the determination about whether they're going to be on, uh, TV or not. In terms of cost, we kind of lay out in the, in the memorandum what it, what its cost might be if we, if we would go forward with, uh, taping, but the quarterly taping or the annual meeting taping, uh, doesn't seem like it hits the mark, uh, very well in terms of building an audience and what gets on TV and what doesn't get on TV. Uh, Director Bennerott, do you have anything that you want to add to that description? There isn't any action scheduled for the council, uh, to take on this item tonight. If you want to take it under advisement and, and, and ask me to put it on for discussion for a future, uh, council meeting, we can certainly do that.
Why don't you add it to a work session agenda?
Okay.
When we have a multitude of items to discuss, this could be one of them.
Okay.
We could spend a half hour on.
Uh, yeah. It looked like there was a recommendation potentially to save that money and to use the time for Channel 16 for some other more informational and educational shows. So, I mean, you do have a, not a recommendation, but a suggestion maybe?
We do.
So I'd like to at least recognize that and say that, that sounds like a pretty good idea to me, but if you'd like it at a work session, that's fine, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd chime in that it seemed to me that one of the alternate recommendations was maybe you decide on, um, that you either go all in or not at all on commissions. And so maybe somebody like, you know, we've had a lot of park board discussions that have ended up being very consequential from a financial perspective and, you know, that strikes me as a board that we, we'd benefit a lot from having them on and, and we should have them on all the time. Some, you know, perhaps it's not, what I took from the memo is, you know, doing quarterly or annual doesn't really make much of a dent and so we should either go all in or not go at all. And so maybe the work session can talk about, you know, which ones would be worth pursuing. And, and I get that we have to strike a balance on that. There's a cost issue associated with it as well.
Yeah. I think that's a good summary. Um, you know, there are some logistical issues about how we do that, given that this is the best room for, for those, for those meetings that are going to be videotaped to occur. Uh, we need to make sure that we spread our boards and commissions out appropriately over the month so that they can all be in here.
All right. Sounds like there's some good work session material here to me.
Thank you. And, uh, that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. How about the scheduled meetings, dates and events as of October 20th? Is there something here you wanted to...
You know, there isn't really, we're going to add this, uh, feature to your, uh, to this agenda, um, in lieu of what we used to do where we've had that long list at the end of the, uh, we can't, for some technical reasons, uh, continue to do that any longer, but wanted to include it as an item here to see if you had any questions about upcoming, upcoming agenda items? We can answer those tonight. Otherwise, it's, it's the schedule.
Okay. Anyway, you have any questions about scheduling?
No.
All right. Uh, that'll conclude the council meeting. I'm, I'm going to adjourn it. We're going to reconvene as the, uh, HRA. Council meeting is adjourned. Reconvening as the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Staunton?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. Um, we have a form of agenda in front of us this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda for the HRA discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Um, and then minutes of, uh, October 6th and special closed meeting of October 14th. Is there a motion to approve those two sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second, to approve the, uh, regular meeting minutes on October 6th and the special closed meeting minutes of October 14th. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then we have an item on the HRA agenda that is, mirrors the, an item we had on the consent agenda and that's the request for purchase for the Grandview District Transportation Study, which will be paid for out of, uh, the Grandview Tiff District Funds. Uh, any, somebody would care to move that matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the, uh, for the HRA to approve the implementation of the Grandview District Transportation Study as recommended by staff. Any further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. No more business for the HRA?
There is not.
All right. HRA stands adjourned.
Please look at your time of 9:25. Now look at your time at 9:20. Nicely run meeting, sir.